Members Jean.
Here.
Member Rodriguez, currently absent. Member President Martinez.
Thank you. And for the record, student member Salem is here as well. Okay, so moving on to item two, which is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda as is?
I'm also approve the agenda.
Thank you. Member when seconds, thank you. Student member Salem, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Believe we will be, are we set up to vote on this item? Miss Gutierrez on board docs, so we will, we are trying our board doc functionality for voting here.
I will be opening up the vote now. You should be receiving a message to vote. I have, I have all four votes perfect. So let me close voting. Final resolution and if you give me a second, I'll share my screen to show. Hold on. Okay.
Okay, I'm available.
Hi there, member Rodriguez.
I don't want you to see me because I don't look very good right now.
Okay.
Not that I ever look good, but what the heck?
If you guys see, I have a motion by members Jean, second by member when I have a yes by Martinez, Jean, when and Salem me and this vote, I apologize. Member Rodriguez, we took the vote right before you got on, so we'll include you in the, in the next vote. And this is just for approval of the agenda.
Okay.
Motion carries, President.
Thank you. All right, that's our first official vote on board docs and we will continue to do this just so that it's easier from a record keeping perspective. Thank you so much, Ms. Gutierrez for walking us through that. And with that, if we, if I could ask everyone to stand and we will say the budget allegiance, please.
Just imagine me standing.
We are. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. My nation. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thank you so much. Okay, with that, we move to item three point three, new business three point one. Is the approval of the 2020 21 learning continuity and attendance plan? May I have a motion and a second to open discussion on this item, please?
I'll make the motion.
I seconded the motion.
Member Rodriguez moves, member Jean seconds. Thank you. And Ms. Gutierrez, are any public comment on this item?
No public comment.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, I will hand this over to Superintendent Triplett.
Thank you, President Martinez. So as you all know, we, we had a review of this plan at the prior meeting. So this, this special board meeting is to, to allow for any further discussion, any questions to come up. And just a, just a reminder that this is a really, really important plan because it really seeks to address how we're going to use resources, in particular to ensure that we're supporting all students with learning loss mitigation brought on by the by, by the pandemic. And so this, this took a lot of time, a lot of effort and a lot of input from many, many different stakeholders. And again, I want to appreciate Ms. Cervantes Falk who's here with us tonight and is, is also available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from or comments from any of the board members? I believe the, the intent was not for her, for Ms. Falk to review the presentation, given that the content was reviewed, right? So it would be just any, any contents after having had a week or almost a week to review.
That's correct.
So, yeah.
I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank Ms. Cervantes Falk for the wonderful presentation that she gave to us during the last board meeting. It was very informative and and she gave us a lot of information and it was easily digestible. So it was, it was very well. Well done and presented. Thank you.
Thank you, member when.
So a quick question regarding the free lunch. Obviously, when, when, when the school was in session, I mean, 100% of the students either charged, get charged their bank account or their car or charged with a fraction of the cost or get free lunch. But 100% of them will get lunch from school. Right now, we're providing lunch for students just to pick out with their parents to pick up. Any idea about what fraction of the students, how many of them are actually getting lunch on the, on the school side?
Yeah, thank you, Member Jean. I don't have any statistics for you tonight, but, but I can say that since the, the the regulations were changed, enabling anyone under 18 in Newark to pick up the lunches, the, the amount of lunches distributed significantly increased. And I think certain board members who have been supporting there can attest to the amount of people that, that have started to pick up the lunches. But if you'd like, we can, we can provide some, some more concrete statistics.
Yeah. So because by reading this doc, it feels like, I understand right after COVID-19, the regulation is anybody under 18 living in Newark can get a lunch. With or without being a Newark Unified Student. But by look, by reading this document, it looks like we're reverting back to only Newark Unified Student goes to the, goes to the site to pick up lunch. So I guess that number should, should revert back to normal. Or is this still the case today that any under 18 person living in Newark can pick up lunch?
Yes, currently, any, anyone under 18 can pick up a lunch. That is not how we started the school year, though. And so that might be part of the confusion is that at the start of the year, the, the state and federal government had not, had not made that change. And so when we started, it was only students or families who had completed the application or were paying the full price of the, the daily lunch, were picking up the lunch. But, and I can't remember the exact date, but I think it was sometime either earlier this month or at the end of August when that rule was suddenly changed. And we're really, really relieved because there are many families that, that are really in severe need of, of food on a daily basis right now. And we were concerned that we weren't being able to provide that food to everybody.
Okay.
So I got some clarification on that, if you don't mind. It's very similar to the summer program. So when they don't have to be a student of Newark Unified, they just have to be under 18 and they come in and get the lunch with no, no questions asked. Now, what happens to special ed students that are between the age of 18 to 22?
Not sure. They can receive the lunch just like, oh, I'm sorry, you said between 18 and 22. Oh, that's a good question. I would, I would defer to.
My understanding is if there's special ed between the 18 and 22, then they would also receive free lunch. That's my understanding. Unless you have something different.
I think that's correct, but I wouldn't want to speak out of turn. So I would want to either defer to one of my staff here or, or make sure I went back and and confirm that with child nutrition. Ms. Dela Cruz, do you have any further confirmation of that?
No, I don't know the exact answer to that. And I would hate to give you one without confirmation.
But I think, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, it makes sense because there are special ed students that are still in school up to the age of 22. So if it's along those same lines, then I could see how they would probably be eligible.
Okay, so I think that's just a, you know, just a, is that a, just a follow up? If you could all circle back on that one, I think coming back to member Jean's question, because it is just content regarding the, the LCP. Member Jean, was your question just, you know, are we capturing correctly like the, the go forward plan with regards to lunch? Is that kind of?
Yeah, I mean, because by reading this document, it just like was superintendent, it feels like right now we're going back to the old way of only NUSD students pick up lunch at the school side. And if that's the case, I was wondering whether it's currently 30% getting the lunch or 50% or 70%, because I would assume it's much lower than before the lockdown. Because before the lockdown, your guarantee is 100% of students eating lunch on site. Right now, since they, they stay at home, parents like choose to go there, pick up the, pick up the, I mean, pick up the food. Yeah.
That's right. Yeah.
So the, the purpose of the lunches is not really to, to differentiate between Newark, Newark Unified School District students and Newark City of Newark students. It's just to make available lunch to anyone under 18. It's except for special ed and and it's, it's all inclusive. So and there's no questions asked. There's the only tatties, tatties that they take is how many lunches are they serving? And that's it.
Yeah, but I, but I think it, Member Jean's question is valid from the perspective of the funding source and, and is the expectation, you know, are we given that we are using this, this LCAP money and are, is it just for, is the verbiage correct to say, hey, it's not just our students? Maybe that's the question. And I don't know if you wanted to, to bring that language up or with regards to.
Understanding of, nothing, my understanding of the funding is that it, as it always does when, when, when you're serving of free lunches, it takes a while to catch up. So you're kind of, you know, my understanding is you're always behind and you're waiting for the state to kind of reimburse you. So hopefully it doesn't impact us too much negatively until we get fully funded. So that's my understanding. And Ms. Dela Cruz.
Well, I think we're talking about two different programs. So the program that we're in right now, the free lunch is not necessarily connected to the LCP. So this LCP allows us to continue to provide lunches to our students. So if anything, it, it helps us and supplements us after this free lunch program ends.
I, I think that's, I think that's it. That's the clarity. I think that the question that was being asked is right now, we came into, we'll call it additional funding that allows us to give, you know, no questions asked, if you will. If that fund, if that funding isn't renewed and whatnot, our LCAP, LCP would at least, if minimum, fund our students, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. And I guess the target, the LCP money, when they give it out, the target is literally 100% of NUSD students. I mean, when they, when they fund this, right?
Yeah, the LCP is intended for our students only.
And, and the reality probably is far less than 100% of users.
Correct. Okay. All right. Thanks. I think that was important, just as kind of that, that difference in sources. Yeah, sorry.
And I did, I did receive a notification to member Rodriguez's question that the students 18 to 22 also received the free lunch currently.
Thank you. Thanks for answering that. Any other questions? Number funds wins a point. It's very easy to follow and kind of just, you know, kind of confirm and read the story, if you will, on the plan. I think maybe it's a broader question and I may have even asked it last time, but you know, there's a lot going on, a lot of movement, a lot of moving parts. How would we expect or what's your thought on how we would be expect, expected to just getting updates on, hey, how this is working? Or here's where we're having some, some, some challenges. What are, what are, what should we expect from, from update perspective?
That is a very good, oh, thank you. That is a very good question. If I may, let me speak a little bit about how we did this during our LCAP, you know, the, the, the normal LCAP practice. And so with the normal LCAP, we had an annual update and being that this was my first year with Newark, I'm not sure what the previous practice had been, but usually with the, with the, with the annual update, there also needed to be stakeholder engagement. And so asking the allies to keep their stakeholders informed. With the LCP, we have not heard from the state exactly what is going to be happening. I do know that January of 2021, they are expected to come up with the template for the new LCAP moving forward. And the conversation from what I heard from CDE in the last meeting last week was that they are contemplating having an annual update to the LCP. So that's in the formal sense, but I don't have concrete information for you at this time. We will have it in January. That's not to say that it keeps us as a district or you as a board to simply ask, you know, of us that we bring to you an update, let's say mid-year or so forth. And so that's something that we can always bring to you. In addition to that, the one thing that will continue is the the budget overview or the budget portion of the supplemental funds, which I will need to discuss with Mrs. Dela Cruz and Dr. Triplett further because that's another piece that is coming our way. And I believe that is due sometime in December. So like I said, all we need to hear is that the board would like an update on the LCP by a certain time and we will be sure to to work on that date. On that report, I should say.
Okay. Well, we'll definitely connect with Superintendent Triplett on that then. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Okay, see none. Ms. Gutierrez, can you please repeat the motion before us?
So the recommendation is that staff recommends that the board approve the 2020 21 learning continuity and attendance plan, currently known as the LCP. I have a motion by member Jean and a second by member Rodriguez.
I think it's the reverse. I think member Rodriguez made the motion. I seconded it.
Thank you for that clarification. And then if you guys are ready, member Rodriguez, did you log on to board docs?
Yes, ma'am.
Question?
So I'm in board docs now and do I go to the meeting or I apologize?
Yes, no problem. We'll take a second, if you don't mind, President Martinez. So you go to the agenda and on the bottom, before you on the bottom of the agenda, you're going to click join meeting right on the cover sheet.
Okay, on the agenda, the cover sheet.
You would click the date, then the cover sheet comes up at the very bottom. It says join meeting.
Okay, I must be on the wrong one because I hit agenda and then in the middle is board docs again. So do I hit that again? It's gotta be my only option. So
Did you click on, so when you open board docs, you're right in the front, it says featured meetings. You just have to click on, on today's meeting?
Okay, so here I am. I hit board docs again and I'm in general library. So I'm all messed up here. So.
If you, if you click on meetings.
On the meeting?
On the top, on the top of the bar, it says meetings.
Right. Okay, here it is. Okay.
So then you, so if you click on, on today's date, on the very bottom, it should be a section, an option to say join meeting.
Join the meeting. Got it.
Perfect. Click on that.
I did.
Okay, so you should see 3.1 highlighted in yellow.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to request voting right now. So you should all receive a, a notification to submit.
Oh, here it is. Got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And sorry, and sorry, sorry, Ms. Gutierrez, is student member Salem not getting one or he is getting one as well?
He is getting one as well.
Okay, but I still should ask first or do I?
Correct.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. Student member Salem, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. All right.
So, Member Rodriguez, did you select your option, your vote?
Yeah, it doesn't say yes. It says yeah.
That is correct. It's yay, nay, or?
Okay, so let's get clarity on this.
Yay, nay.
Thank you.
Absention, absention. Okay, I have all votes. I have all votes in. I'm closing the voting. I'm gonna lock it in. Okay, motion carries with four. And let me share my, my screen so you can see that.
I feel like I'm in Freeport, Louisiana.
Okay, so if you see my screen, I have the recommendation motion made by member Rodriguez, second by member Jean. Motion carries with yeas from member Martinez, Jean, when Rodriguez and Salem me.
Got it. Good job. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. And thanks, everyone for bearing with us, everyone on the team, but anyone who is watching the meeting, we will continue to try to get a little smoother on this, but this is our first time. So thank you so much, Ms. Gutierrez for that. Okay, thank you. And again, thanks, Ms. Cervantes Falk, Superintendent Triplett and the rest of the team for, for putting the LCP, CP together. Very, very, very nice job. Okay, and with that, we move to item four, which is Board of Education, any committee reports, announcements, requests, any, any particular topic you would like to raise to the superintendent and team. So first we'll start with member when.
Good evening, everyone. So on, on, we will be having our next school consolidation committee meeting this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I hope that you all can, will tune in. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Member Jean.
I don't really have that much except for just want to bring in clarity, like I requested last Thursday regarding how the board should proceed with the formula and borrow from the Fund 17. I mean, are we repaying this a fraction of that or don't need to repay at all?
Okay, well, we'll definitely, I think maybe for that, I, I believe there is an answer. So Superintendent Triplett, maybe you can, if you could maybe or, or Ms. Ella Cruz send an informational email and then we could certainly have some additional discussion if needed at the, at the, at the next meeting.
Yes, we can, we can most definitely give an update and then I would expect that there'll probably be interest from the board in a conversation either at the next meeting or it might be that we need to do a little bit more work in preparation. At an upcoming meeting.
Sure. Fantastic. Thank you. Member Rodriguez.
The only thing I have is make sure I'm not on mute. Is that I'm not going to be able to join any one of you at the different schools to help give out lunches. So if anyone, whether it's staff or, or a board member can, can help out the schools, you know, be a big help. There's a lot of some schools are giving out as much as 400 lunches on, on anyone, any particular day. So if it's possible, everything else is going well and I appreciate everybody's thoughts and prayers on my surgery that went well and looking forward to continuing to have these excellent Zoom meetings.
Thank you, sir. Student member Salem me.
I don't have anything. It was nice seeing everyone and I hope you guys have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
I did have one more thing. The resolution we passed at the last meeting, Black Lives Matters as, as it pertains to African American Newark students. There's a lot of interest in other high schools or districts and doing something similar. So again, I applaud the students for putting it together and I'd love to see this go, you know, with Superintendent Monroe and, and other county districts and everything. And I, I think it's much needed and hopefully we can try to make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Member Rodriguez. And so, Member Rodriguez, so good to hear you and thank you for joining us. We know you had surgery, so we're very, very happy that you are feeling, you sound good. So hopefully you're feeling better.
That's the problem. I, they keep telling me you sound and look good and then I keep telling them, but I'm hurting, please.
All right. Well, that is all. I remember when you, you made the announcement about our next meeting on Thursday. So again, thank you for joining us this evening. And actually, I'm, I'm about to cut you out Superintendent Triplett, you're next. So from the board, that is our, 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 our last comment. So with that, I'll hand it to you for any concluding remarks, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Martinez. I do want to appreciate member Rodriguez for, for being here despite, despite his surgery and, and his recovery. It's, it's a real testament to your dedication, member Rodriguez. And, and I also appreciate the calling out of the, of the, the resolution from last session. We are in the process of starting to really think through our next steps as a district. And you saw in the resolution that the task, a task force was one of the, the next steps and that's something that we're, we're starting to plan for. So we will definitely have more information to share with the board and as well as, as reaching out to other districts in the county to share the work that's been done and to partner with them. The other thing that I wanted to bring up tonight is very, very current news is that the county announced, and you may have heard it already on, on the news, that the county announced today that we are moving from purple to red in terms of the state COVID watch. And so the, you can, you can find more information on the county website, Office of Education website, and we will also be sending out information this evening from the county superintendent. But the short, the short of it is that we have moved as a county from purple to red. And according to the guidelines, within two weeks, we would be eligible to begin the, the, the process of considering reopening of schools across the county. And the county has said that they will, after two weeks, they will be announcing steps towards reopening. So I would not anticipate that even if we have two solid consecutive weeks in the red, that we will immediately be in a position to, to reopen. But, but it is a step forward towards returning to some level of normalcy. And I think that everyone will be relieved to hear that. And at the same time, we are continuing to negotiate with our labor partners to really plan thoughtfully how that return to in-person learning will look once we do have the go ahead from the county. That's all I have to share tonight.
Very good. Thank you. And again, thanks to the rest of the team for, for being here. And with that, we move to item six, which is meeting adjournment. So may I have a motion and a second, please?
I'd like to make the motion. The meeting?
I'll go second this time.
Okay, member Jean moves. Member Rodriguez seconds. And this is an action. So go ahead.
And actually, President Martinez, the agenda was made prior to, so this one will require a hand vote. And actually, President Martinez, the agenda was made prior to, so this one will require a hand vote or calling out.
Or call, okay, very good. Student member Salemme?
Yes.
Member Wen?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez? Yeah. Member Zhang?
Yes.
My vote is yes as well, so the motion carries unanimously. And so meeting is adjourned at 7:31 PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Bye.